Let's call this meeting to order. This is, hang on a second. This is a special session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, the 10th of June. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rallo?
Here.
Councilmember Scambleri?
Here.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Volan?
Here.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
And Councilmember Sandberg?
Here.
Everyone is present and accounted for. Here is a summation of the agenda. We will hear reports from the mayor and city offices. We will hear appointments and hirings. We will hear legislation for first reading and resolutions, including ordinance 2011 and ordinance recommending that portions of the Bloomington Municipal Code be temporarily suspended due to the ongoing public health emergency. We will take up matters of council schedule and then we will adjourn, followed immediately by a hearing of the Sustainable Development Committee on Ordinance 2011. Let's go to reports from the mayor and city offices. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't know you're not doing council comments, huh?
It's a special session.
Sorry. I'm learning. Sorry. Thank you.
I have a question. Okay. Am I allowed to amend and make a motion to amend the agenda? I'm sorry. Is that like, should I wait until after the mayor?
You can, but I think that the motion is in order before or after the mayor's report. So let's hear the report and then we can talk about it.
I'd be happy to let Kate go first if she wants to. I don't want to get in the way.
If Councilmember Rosenberg wants to make her motion, she's welcome to do so.
Okay, thanks. Council President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda tonight to add time, an item for council comment after our first reading for new legislation.
Did you say council comment or public comment?
Public comment, sorry.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Can we have some discussion on the motion? Councilmember Rosenberg, would you like to explain?
Sure, yes. I know this is a special session, but I just wanted to make sure we added a space in here tonight in case we had folks who are joining the meeting with anything that they wanted to talk about. I know sometimes it's hard to figure out what our meetings allow and do not allow. And I know we've had some county meetings recently where folks are getting on and commenting about current events. And so I just wanted to have that space here in case anyone did get on tonight.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Sandberg, questions?
Is there any concern over what this might be scheduling for the following, for the standing committee meeting that will directly follow this? Or is there any concern about the length of time that this would delay the meeting?
Yeah, I think I should probably answer that. So in scheduling tonight's meeting, there was very little intended to be on the agenda. We, and it was a special session meant to pick up a couple of items that couldn't be done last week. And last week I told council members, you know, that I promoted the special session on the idea that it was going to be very brief. Certainly events have overtaken us. I don't have any particular objection to including public comment here. I think that might be, I mean typically we don't take public comment in special session.
Could we limit that? Could we limit that to our usual 20 minutes for a public comment? Would that help in getting on with the next meeting?
We could, but I also wanted to suggest that the, one of the events that have overtaken us is the news of protests regarding policing. And to that end, I know that the Public Safety Committee is planning a meeting, I think with Councilmember Rallo?
I think I agree with Councilmember Sandberg's suggestion that we limit it to 20 minutes or have some time limit to make sure that we're on schedule for our next meeting.
Councilmember Rosenberg, do you have any objection to that?
So far it looks okay to have a time limit. I don't, I mean, there are a ton of people on here and most of them are familiar faces such as the nine of us and city staff. So I think that's okay. I think if we need to adjust that as we go, it could work too.
Okay. Normally, public comment, by the way, comes after reports from the council members and the mayor. So we would still have the mayor's report before we had public comment. Councilmember Scambleri?
You answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comment on this council? Question from the clerk, Mr. Sigler?
Yes, well, it's not so much a question, but I just want a clarification of the motion. So is the motion a motion for a public, a 20-minute public comment period? Is that possible?
The motion is just for public comment. You know, the limiting of it is something that we could make formal or I can arbitrarily do it. I don't think we need to be that formal about it as long as we have the period. That's what the motion calls for.
Okay, so motion for public comment.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Are there any other questions or comment on the motion? Councilmember Sims?
Just so that I'm clear, is it okay with Councilmember Rosenberg and her intent that 20-minute limit is okay? At least to start off, she said, I think.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Volan was, is right on that. We can start. I mean, we can start with that and if it needs to be adjusted, that's okay.
Thank you.
I mean, again, so far I think it looks okay.
Okay. Are there any other, any other questions or comments before we take a vote? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Yes, we will start with Councilmember Scambleri?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. We will have public comment immediately after reports from the mayor and city offices, and I will endeavor to limit it to 20 minutes. Mr. Mayor, if you would please go ahead with your report.
Thank you very much. Nice to be with you. I, I will try to be brief. There's so much that could be said. I know many of you were involved, some very directly, in the very powerful day for our community last Friday with the march and rally at a size that has not been seen in recent years. I want to just comment, I've commented in other places and at more length, but I just want to comment that that, that event really was a challenge to us about how well or how poorly we are living our values in this community and of course wider in the country, and how do we do that better? And it was a powerful day for Bloomington, powerful voices and powerful calls for change that I know we all take very seriously. And it was a day that our community stood up and raised voices and marched. And a powerful day, that means a lot to us. I was really proud of our community on that day and the organizers did a fantastic job. And it's a challenge to the government. It's a challenge to all of us about how we do our work. And I look forward to working with you as we go forward on that. I do want to note, I think in that regard, with so much work to do to overcome racism that still is all around us and with particular attention, I know, to public safety and the police, there will be a Board of Public Safety meeting next Tuesday evening. Or I don't know the exact time, it may be five o'clock, but we can confirm that maybe in the chat. But the Board of Public Safety will meet next Tuesday, the 16th. And presentations will include some of the detailing of our own communities, protocols, approaches, trainings, activities, including, for example, the eight can't wait list, which I think will be useful for our community to hear where we are on those. And the 21st Century Policing Report, which we did an intensive review of and adoption of virtually all of them four years ago. But I think we're going to ask for a review of that and the Board of Public Safety will be a good place for that to happen. And I'd be happy to answer questions about any of this if you like. In terms of the COVID update, let me quickly just note, as you know, we're in stage three under local order through June 15th, Monday, with the exception that our gathering sizes are still limited to 50 for social gatherings. Then the numbers that we do have continue to be good in terms of infections, in terms of hospitalizations. In fact, we now have no one on a ventilator, as I understand it, as of latest report in the county, which is a good, a good sign. But this concerns continue as we continue to see experts advising about that and we know students returning. I do expect as we move likely, under a new county health officer order into stage four, that means bars, playgrounds, gathering sizes all can change, including opening up of bars, which would be a first step here locally for that. I continue to be concerned and collaborating very closely on the right steps with that. Next week you'll hear from the Social Services Working Group, which you also heard, I know, a week or two ago in detail as they kind of help provide some ongoing recommendations. Tonight you'll hear from the Economic Stabilization and Recovery Group, including particularly from Brian Payne of the CD5 Friendly Bloomington about their role in our community's recovery. And I'll just close with three quick updates. One, I know you've seen the news about the Waldron. We will be doing immediate review of the condition of the Waldron. We expect that to be transferred back to the city probably in August, doing an immediate review just on physical condition. We'll also look at kind of the short-term temporary uses of that as we take that back in short order. And then I do expect we'll want to create a, an entity, ad hoc group that will help advise our community, represent the voices of our community about how it should be used in the longer run going forward. And two and three related, thank you for your consideration and review of the adjusting and loosening in some ways of sign regulations and fees, reflecting how we want to help our community, particularly the hospitality industry, recover and begin to get their feet again. And lastly, also on that same vein, appreciate your consideration of doing some pilot project at Kirkwood to open up some seating, outdoor seating, some adjustment with the, with the new smooth Kirkwood for the weekend after this coming when on June 19th. We think that'll be a good thing for the community. So I'll, I think I'm handing it to Alex Crowley for a brief comment and introduction to Brian Payne and then happy to take questions at the end. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Crowley?
Thanks, Mary Hamilton. Councilmembers, Alex Crowley, Director of Economic Sustainable Development for the city and also a member of the Economic Stabilization and Recovery Working Group. As you know, that group has been hard at work since March on three fronts. The Rapid Response Fund, and I'll give you a very brief highlight. You have this information in your packet, but the Rapid Response Fund Loan Program and some of the non-moneyed support that happened immediately, including some of the work that came out of the mill. And then the reopening process, which is underway right now. And, and you know, the Sustainable Development Committee will be looking at some actions that support, that are part of a package of support for that. And then finally, long-term planning, which is arguably the most important thing. And that's, that's well underway as well. And we'll bring you up to date on that activity later on. I wanted to continue to highlight members of the Economic Stabilization Recovery Working Group team. And so before I hand it over to Brian Payne, who has been integral in the process of standing up the Rapid Response Fund and some other activities, and also Councilmember Scambleri, who's been a member of the team as well. I wanted to just quickly highlight the information that starts the presentation. And Brian Payne will launch it here. We'll jump straight to slide four, which is kind of the key. And what you'll see on slide four is that we are basically committed to about $1.5 million right now, of which about $1.2 million come from the funded amounts that have gone out the door. And 1.16 are related to the food and beverage monies. So we are in pretty good shape moving forward. One of the challenges will be whether or not this kind of program can extend beyond the executive order. And we're looking at that right now. We're also looking at additional funding sources that might help to augment what we have. I continue to be concerned about the ongoing pressure on our businesses. We're by no means out of the woods and that has to do with for-profits and not-for-profits in the arts culture world in Bloomington that are integral to our society. So I'm very concerned about what the future holds. And so we are, we're pleased to know we have a little bit of additional funding available and we're continuing to get applications. And we will keep you apprised of how that progresses over the weeks ahead. So I'd like to turn it over to Brian Payne and I'll be around. I can answer questions at the end if that's okay.
Thank you. Mr. Payne?
Thank you, Alex, and thank you, council members, for the opportunity. So I think most of you know me and you certainly know what I look like. So I'm not going to flip back to my visage just to, just to show you tonight's view. So I appreciate the chance to talk about my organization, CD5 Friendly Bloomington, as well as our work with the Economic Stabilization Recovery Team. So, let's make sure we're doing this. So CD5 Friendly Bloomington, I think, you know, most of the projects I've been involved with in my time at the city, and I should preface this by saying, I understand that you're very busy and I'll keep this high level and I'll stick to 10 minutes. Most of my projects have been pretty visible to council, but this one has not. And so I'm really happy for the opportunity to talk about our journey here and then what we've been able to do in our first few months as a staffed organization. So CD5 Friendly Bloomington has a mission of helping CD5s deliver flexible and affordable financing to Bloomington, Monroe County and the surrounding region. So many of you may know this, but for those who don't, what are CD5s? These are community development financial institutions. And so these are private financial entities. They can be nonprofit or for-profit entities. But they're funders. They lend capital out and they can take many forms. You know, experts in the industry like to say, if you've seen one CD5, you've seen one CD5. It can be a loan fund, a credit union, a bank, other types of depository institutions, venture fund, a micro enterprise fund. But what's unique about CD5s is that unlike other lenders, they are 100% dedicated to their mission, right, which is affordable, flexible financing to help disadvantaged communities and people. Furthermore, CD5s have to provide development services and technical assistance as well as capital. So banks can just give you money and then hope for payments on a regular basis. But CD5s to get certification from the Department of Treasury need to show how they're providing assistance to help their borrower succeed beyond just providing the money itself. They also are held accountable to a target market. So they can either be held accountable to target populations or target geographic areas that meet minimum federal poverty standards or that are federally designated populations, minority populations, veteran-owned minority-owned businesses, things like that. And then, you know, the bottom line is that CD5s tend to be profitable but not profit maximizing. So they are more accountable to community and mission rather than shareholders. So these are some of the ways that CD5s are distinct from traditional financiers. So CD5s operate in the community development space, which is a deliberately broad term. But what that means is that they fund projects that have trouble accessing financing from traditional lenders like banks. So either banks are regulated against lending to those entities because of their creditworthiness, or they simply don't do it because it's not profitable. And CD5s definitely developed out of a historic longstanding problem of discrimination within traditional lenders. So this can be for community facilities, affordable housing, childcare, infrastructure. A lot of CD5s focus on consumers who need auto loans to get to work, mortgage assistance, credit enhancement, and then of course, small businesses, nonprofit organizations, and then commercial real estate, affordable housing. So those are some of the typical areas that CD5s operate in, but they're innovating all the time and they operate in a broad range of sectors. So historically, this is a better part of two decades. CD5 lending in Bloomington has been, has been lacking. So that over approximately 15 years, there was about $5.3 million in lending. And this is according to the largest CD5 Trade Association. So it's not perfect data. It won't capture the few CD5s that aren't on the federal certified radar or are not on the OFN network radar or with the CD5 Coalition. But it's pretty, it's the best data we have. And so you can see that over that time, there was, there was under $6 million in lending. So keep that number in mind. So why are we CD5 friendly? If CD5s are so wonderful, why, why don't we start a CD5? So the answer we came up with, and this is giving pretty short shrift to what was a two-year journey by the city of Bloomington, led by the mayor, Community Foundation, the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association, to do a market study, talk to stakeholders, think through what was the best strategy, and then stand up an organization. So this started in 2017 and we didn't get our 501(c)(3) status until late 2018. So CD5s have, just in the last three or four decades, grown to a huge industry. They have over $180 billion in assets in the community active right now. But they tend to look like the power grid. They are in areas where poverty is concentrated, but also where people are concentrated, which leaves a lot of lower population areas, especially rural areas and communities that aren't major cities, underserved by CD5s. And since CD5s serve capital needs that aren't met by traditional financing, those places don't have adequate capital for those needs. And the barrier to entry for starting a new CD5 is high. Not only is it difficult, you need specific expertise to do it, but CD5s are increasingly specialized. And we're not a huge community, but we have the whole spectrum of capital needs. We need small business funding, affordable housing financing, public facilities. We need all of it. So one new CD5 is unlikely to solve our problems. And CD5s are looking for new places to deploy their assets and expand into new markets. So this dovetails nicely with where the industry is looking to head. So the bottom line is that we are seeking to work with the best regional and national CD5s to bring them to Bloomington and the surrounding area by organizing our market and providing access to incentives through credit enhancement fund and through the services of our organization. So this is just a basic graphic of how CD5 friendly markets differ from financial markets and CD5 markets. CD5s in the middle graphic insert themselves between investors and users to direct supply of capital. So background investors like big banks, state and localities and other investors in CD5s don't have to have the expertise CD5s do to meet the end user. So CD5 friendly just adds an organizational hub in between the CD5 and the user because the CD5 capital is not getting to Bloomington. It's not getting to South Central Indiana. So our job is to organize our market and export that out to CD5s and promote our opportunities to CD5s and also to bring CD5s into Bloomington, into the surrounding region and learn about what's going on here. So brief organizational details, we are, we're an independent nonprofit region, an independent nonprofit. We serve 13 counties. So it's the Regional Opportunities Initiatives Counties plus Jackson and Lawrence, I think. So over, down to Orange, over to Brown, up to Lawrence, over to Davies and DeVois, but not Artholme. So it's almost every county in our region is smaller than the city of Bloomington proper. So it's Monroe County and then the most rural counties in the immediate vicinity. We've got a board of six members. Three of those permanent seats are held by our co-founding organizations. Our operational funding has come from bank foundations, local and national, as well as competitive grants that we've secured. I am the only staffer, but I'm lucky enough to have a fiscal sponsorship with the Community Foundation, which gives me an office space and access to HR services and controller services. And it's been really, really helpful and given at no charge to help our organization get off the ground. CFP Capital is our enhancement fund. So that is a pool of money we use to help CD5s and borrowers complete projects. We can use that in a variety of ways to manage risk, to increase the cap with which a CD5 is comfortable lending, to blend an interest rate down so that it's affordable for the local borrower when it's not affordable for a CD5 as is, we could guarantee loan losses. There's any number of ways we can use the money, but the money is designed to facilitate projects that couldn't otherwise happen. And this is totally owned and operated by CD5 Friendly Bloomington. And we have an investment committee that approves all our expenditures. So basically I like to organize our key services and the reasons a CD5 would want to work with us into four things. One is that regional and national CD5s don't know what's going on in our region. And my job is to identify and develop prospective investment opportunities, get them ready for CD5s, to look at them and help them arrange their documentation and know what CD5 is a good match. So CD5s are very specialized and they're very different with what they like to invest in. So you need someone to help direct traffic for, for a market that's not currently served. And then of course, I market those opportunities and do whatever I can to make CD5s interested and make them successful. And then we have our money from CFP Capital that we can use to complete investments. We also have a deal with Bank of America that allows any CD5 that does business in our region to access very, very cheap backstop financing as an incentive for them to look at South Central Indiana. And then finally, we provide technical assistance and coordination. So we have borrowers that are going through city permitting, that are looking for city grants, that need to work with local contractors and, and some just need business assistance and support services. So I can utilize my personal network and our board members have an outstanding network to help them get those wraparound services they need to make their project successful. So, you know, I came on board on September 3rd. So we've been a staffed organization for a little over eight months. And we've, we've made a really big impact already and we're really proud of it. So $5 million in the better part of two decades. And in the last year, we have seen CD5s invest $15.5 million in Bloomington proper. Four CD5s have participated in programs or are looking at underwriting projects currently. We've supported projects that created 50 new affordable housing units as well as 116 existing units that were renovated and upgraded. You all know about the RAT conversion at River Butler in Walnut Woods. And then that has supported 10 jobs in the community. We've leveraged almost $17 million in tax credits and state incentives. And overall, that bottom number is the total project cost of the projects that CD5 Friendly has been a part of. So we've had a big impact already and we're, we're working to make that bigger as we learn about how to be a CD5 friendly city. And if I didn't mention it before, we're the first city in the United States to try this model. So let me talk a little bit about how that mission overlaps with the Rapid Response Fund. And again, I'll be quick. So from the planning stage on the front end, my job was, and my board member's job to assist us, was to analyze the lending landscape that was available both before the pandemic and in the pandemic context. So CD5s and lenders worked really quickly to come up with new programs and grants and loans. And so we needed to know what was going to be available already and what the gaps were that the Rapid Response Fund was going to have to meet and specifically where the gaps were that were affecting our region. So that was a big part of my job in the front end. You know, I talked to CD5 folks and local bankers and worked with the other team members to create a quickly administrable loan product that targets our specific needs and actually helps make the impact we're looking to make. So helping design the terms, the eligibility criteria, the application process, everything that goes into deciding what, what the product was ultimately going to be. And then, you know, we all played a big role on an ongoing basis as an informational booth, basically a one-stop shop for anybody who needs to know, you know, how to get payment protection program, how to get economic injury disaster loans, other SBA programs, what was going to be in the CARES Act package, tracking what was going to be available for businesses and employees. We held a one-stop Zoom fair for businesses and nonprofits, which ate We held a one-stop Zoom fair for businesses and nonprofits, which eight CDFI's attended. We had over 100 people there, so just keeping the information flowing. And then on the backend, you know, and, and during the, the standing up of the process, I was able to use Community Force, which is the Community Foundation's online grant-making platform, and build the application, right? So to take what we thought needed to be understood in terms of documentation and then put it online in a platform and then help us, you know, troubleshoot that process on a website that we knew about, you know, a week earlier. So that, that was a, a big project and it's worked really well and, and the city and, and the other ESR team members have been really, really helpful. And then, of course, the Advisory Commission that actually reviews the applications needs to be trained in how to use the website, trained on the criteria for the, the loan. And then they need to have their question answers, and we, we got really good feedback from them on to, as to how to make that process easier. We also created an appeals process for really close cases. That is an add-on to the end of the existing RF process. And then finally, for folks who are determined either ineligible or rejected for the program, they enter immediately into the CDFI friendly pipeline. And I work to try to find them financing if they're interested from CDFI's or other local lenders. So yeah, I think you've seen this graph before, but this is just a, a quick overview of the way the application review process works for somebody who wants the Rapid Response Fund money. And so this is what, what had to be built on the platform and what these, these really generous volunteer advisory commission members are, are doing to analyze there. We've got bankers and financial experts looking at the creditworthiness and the business situation. And then we've got local stakeholders committees analyzing the qualitative impact and the importance to the community. The city plays the, the final role. And this, and a parallel process, the city and ISBDC and CDFI friendly Bloomington are all working to help us to make everything run smoothly. So that's, that's just a taste of, of how we've been really honored to be able to help the ESR team. And, and as a one-person organization, I'm really, really lucky to be able to work with my former city colleagues and wonderful people in the city. So here's my contact information. I'm certainly interested to, to share more and learn more about folks you think could be good matches for CDFI. Talk about what our organization does, or, or talk about ways we can work together to meet community needs. So it's good to see you all again, and, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Payne and Mr. Crowley and Mayor Hamilton. Are there questions from members on the presentations you just saw? Anyone? Councilmember Scamblerie?
Thank you. Mr. Payne, wherever you went, I think if you could come back. Could you speak about the city's specific commitment to supporting CDFI friendly Bloomington? Is that in the form of your salary? Are there other investments the city makes? What is our type, I guess?
Yeah, that's a good question, and, and the mayor is certainly here, and Alex can, can make sure that I'm telling the truth since I'm no longer a city representative. So the, the city did not, funds my salary in, in no way. The operations money we have at CDFI friendly Bloomington comes from banking foundations and competitive grants we've secured from nonprofits. And it comes also from debt and equity for the CFP Capital Fund. So we have $2 million in public sourced or quasi-public sourced equity that we can lend through the enhancement fund. And we have $2 million in debt for CFP Capital committed by local banks. So we have low interest debt, we can then relend, and we have equity from the BVA and from the Redevelopment Commission. So, so none of that money is from the city of Bloomington proper, but the Redevelopment Commission certainly is TIF revenue. So the city of Bloomington not only, you know, provided most of the staff power and the, you know, the, the funding and the platform to do the market study, to do all the research and, and the mayor's expertise and vision, but also the Bloomington Enterprise Association, the Community Foundation paid a, a fair amount of money to, to hire probably the foremost national expert in the former director of the Opportunity Finance Network, Mark Pinsky, to help us set this up.
Thank you, Mr. Payne, that's helpful. And I especially appreciate hearing about investments from other, from the Community Foundation, from, from the other partners we have around town. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Crowley, I believe you mentioned near the end of your presentation. And thank you for the presentation, by the way, and the updates. But I think you mentioned, you know, that there was some funding left available if needed, and you were exploring what needs businesses, small businesses in our community still have, and what, you know, even exploring the idea of, of leveraging this money in some way beyond the emergency order if needed. And I guess I was wondering if you could explain a little more what those needs look like and, and how we could be most effective in helping. I know initially this money was, or at least my understanding was that this money was, we were playing an integral role because we were acting more quickly and more nimbly than, than, than sort of larger markets could. And we were getting money to businesses sooner than, than they could get from other places. So it seems like going forward, things will be a little bit different. So if you could speak to maybe a little bit about anticipated future needs and how funds from the food and beverage tax might be used to help those emerging needs for businesses.
Yeah, so, well, first of all, just so you understand, the, the possible restriction, which is that the State Board of Accounts specifically tied the food and beverage monies in its ruling, original ruling, which allowed the, the council to allocate food and beverage monies to the executive order. So there, and that executive order currently expires, is set to expire on July 4th. It may, it may, the language of the SBOA ruling allowed for clarification and/or extension of that order, right? So that, that possibility exists that that somehow can be clarified or extended. So let's assume that it's neither and that, and that this sun sets. It is not our intention to disregard that. And it, you know, we would effectively, the last monies that could go out the door from, from the food and beverage as it's currently allocated and the loan program would have to go out the door essentially before the executive order expired. So the first thing that we're going to be doing is just reaching out, and we've done it already, but we'll do it again. Some more is reaching out to organizations that would be beneficiaries of that money and say, just so you know, you know, the, the horizon is unclear. You should probably, if you, if you believe that there's, there's a possibility, you may need some financial support as this window of pandemic continues to expand, then now would be a good time to do it. So that would be the first step. In the event that there would be an extension, I don't, at this point, anticipate that we'd be doing anything much differently than what we're doing. Instead, we would just have the opportunity to extend it beyond the end of the executive order. So it's not, it was not my intention, I'm sorry for the lack of clarity. It was not my intention to suggest that we'd be doing something different with that allocation than what we've been doing. It's mostly a question of timing.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from members? I'll have one if nobody else does. Mr. Payne, I wanted to thank you again for the presentation. I wanted to ask something that you said early on, which is that CDFI's are quote 100% dedicated, unquote, to, you know, that, dedicated to, I don't know, to what? To, they're not nonprofits, so, you know, I mean, every organization is devoted to their mission. How is a CDFI that fundamentally different from a bank?
So it's, so it's a fair question. Some CDFI's are nonprofits, that they're all private entities in that they're unaffiliated with the government, but, but many are 501(c)(3)'s. And their mission cannot be simply to deliver a profit for their shareholders or to, you know, to, to provide traditional banking needs in the community. The mission has to be to help populations and, and communities and individuals that have been designated by the federal government as vulnerable and as needing assistance, right? So their mission has to be targeted at community development. It, it's not just that they're 100% dedicated to mission, it's that the mission has to have a community development focus.
Sure, but I mean, that still doesn't, like, they could devote 5% of their profits to their mission and the rest just goes. I mean, is there some kind of criterion that you use to measure this dedication to their mission?
Yeah, so the, and I, I will confess that I don't know every aspect of the, of the federal government certification process for CDFI's, but every, they have to go through an elaborate certification process to become a CDFI that's certified by the federal government. And then every year, they have to submit a compliance report. And so some of the, the factors of that report are, they have to demonstrate how much of their lending capital is going to specific populations and specific communities and geographic areas that they've designated as their target area. And that, those target areas have to be areas that are satisfactory to the Department of Treasury as, you know, vulnerable areas, right? So only about half of Monroe County is even eligible for a CDFI target area. It doesn't mean that they can't lend outside the target area, but it means that they have to be accountable to, at least 60% of their loan capital has to be designated in that target area. And they have to be 100% dedicated to their mission, which is providing affordable and flexible capital for community development projects.
Got it, okay, thank you, that helps.
Yep.
If there's no other questions, we're going to move on to next item. I want to thank the mayor and city offices for their presentation, and good luck. Come back and see you soon.
Thank you, Joe.
We will now go, as previously moved, to public comment. Can I see a show of hands of people who like to make public comment? Please use the raise hand function in Zoom if you would like to make public comment. We see two people so far. Is there any, who would like to make public comment? Please use the raise hand function now. I see only two people, so.
Can I, um, Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, so if you, to see the raise hand option, I think you need to click on participants and then find your name. And then you can select to raise your hand from there. Mr. Lucas, if you'd like to clarify, I think sometimes the raise hand function is not so obvious.
I think that's right, although as meeting host, I don't think I even have that same ability, so I'm not sure exactly what button to click. But because we have so few participants, you can also send a message to the meeting host over chat and let us know that way that you'd like to comment. I do see two participants that have raised their hand, so if you'd like, we can get started. And then as I see other people start to request, I'll, I'll acknowledge them as well. I think I saw Allison Quantz raise her hand first, so.
Okay, so each speaker will have five minutes. Ms. Quantz, would you please go ahead?
Hi. I understand that, that this is a special meeting, but I want to take advantage of this time since you all are here. I wanted to say, Mayor Hamilton opened his remarks by saying that the march in Bloomington showed how well we're living our values. And I want to disagree with him. I don't think that showing up for a march is living our values. And I don't think that revisiting the recommendations from the 21st Century Policing Task Force is living our values either. I think that we in Bloomington will only be living our values when we defund the police. Police are fundamentally white supremacist structure. They're a tool that's dependent on the threat of violence, and it's the wrong tool for serving our community. So I, I'd like to see the mayor and the council commit to significantly reducing the police budget in Bloomington with the aim of defunding altogether. And that said, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shelton, please go ahead, you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, Council. Jim Shelton with the chamber, but again, speaking on behalf of CASA to update you and the public on the status of, okay, never mind. I was trying to turn my video on, but I guess it's turned off, excuse me. CASAs are court-appointed special advocates. They work with children who are in the juvenile justice system because they've been abused and neglected. Because of COVID-19, the stress on families has dramatically increased. Families are having trouble making a paycheck, therefore taking care of their children. We've got an increase in domestic violence, we've got an increase in substance abuse, and we've got an increase on the abuse of children. All of these result in the court having to get involved, DCS having to get involved. And the court asked the CASA program to provide a volunteer for each of the children that are identified as being in need of services. Because of this growth in numbers of cases, we don't have enough volunteers to handle all the cases the court is sending us. We have a training that's ongoing right now. I want to make sure that people know that we've got one that will start in October. And the CASA program is seriously considering another training in late summer. So for anybody out there who thinks they need a good volunteer opportunity, you can go to MonroeCountyCASA.org, click on the volunteer link and get all the information they may need, or you can call 333-2272. And then usually there are a lot of people who are thinking about it, thinking, yeah, I think I ought to do that, but I'm going to do it later. I waited till after I was retired, for example, but now I know I didn't need to. About half our volunteers are employed. So I'm inviting the public to look into it, to seriously consider it, to keep up with. You can keep up on our webpage and see if there is going to be a late summer training session to try to get some more volunteers. But it's a very good opportunity, it's very satisfying, it's very needed, it helps the children dramatically. And as Judge Galvin has said, he can't imagine trying to have a juvenile court without CASAs. So thank you for this extra opportunity, unexpected, to tell people about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Mr. Lucas, are there any other people who'd like to speak in public comment?
No one else has raised their hand or sent any chats along, so. If you want to give it another 15 seconds, I did see a few folks hop on the meeting after the, the call for public comment.
Oh, another 15 seconds. Again, if you would like to speak during public comment on items that are not on the agenda, please click the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat to the council meeting host. Are there any other takers? If not, we'll close public comment and we'll go now to the next item on the agenda, which is appointments and hirings. Are there any appointments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Piedmont Smith?
Hold on. I move that the council hire Stephen Lucas, who is currently serving as Deputy Administrator Attorney of the Council, to become the Administrator Attorney of the Council effective no later than August 1st, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing Councilwoman Piedmont Smith?
I just want to say thank you to Council President Volan and Council Vice President Sims for the additional information that was shared with us as, you know, an executive's email, executive session-type email, since it is a personnel matter. But I just wanted to say that because last week, you know, we asked for some additional information that has been provided. And so we can all vote on this with the full information, I think that we need to do so.
Any other comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, we'll go to the clerk for a roll call vote on the motion. Mr. Sigler?
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Scamblerie?
Yep.
That is 9-0. Want to congratulate Mr. Lucas and thank him for applying to this position. We look forward to many years of working with you. And you follow in very big footsteps, and I mean that only rhetorically. I don't know Mr. Sherman's shoe size, but thank you and good luck and, you know, do good work. Okay, are there any other appointments to boards and commissions or hirings? Seeing none, we'll move to legislation for first reading.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2011 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote on the motion to introduce. Mr. Sigler?
Okay. So, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Volan.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Scambalary.
Yes.
Rosenberg.
Yeah.
Okay, will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance 2011, an ordinance recommending that portions of the Bloomington Municipal Code be temporarily suspended due to the ongoing public health emergency. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance is a request from the common council to waive certain formalities contained in the Bloomington Municipal Code related to signs and sidewalk seating and merchandising encroachments. The ordinance allows temporary suspension of these formalities in order to assist the local business community with its recovery following ordered closures due to the COVID-19 pandemic. These temporary measures will last until September 30th, 2020, but may be extended as needed beyond that date.
Thank you, and this, this ordinance has been referred to the Sustainable Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Sandberg, members myself, Councilmembers, oh, sorry, chaired by Councilmember Scambalary, with members Flaherty, Sandberg, and Volan as well. And that will be meeting immediately after this, this, this special session is complete. Are there any other items of legislation for first reading?
No.
Okay, we now go to matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas, Mr. Sherman, what do we have as far as council schedule goes?
I can take that. Just a few reminders, the council has two committee meetings tomorrow. The Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee will be meeting tomorrow morning, bright and early at 8:00 a.m. And hopefully we'll have some updated information from the state about how some extensions of deadlines will impact that committee's work. Tomorrow, there will also be a meeting of the Jack Hopkins Committee. It will have its debriefing meeting. The committee wrapped up its process, what was the date, a week or so ago, with its allocation hearing, and the council can expect to see a resolution in this week, in this Friday's packet for next week from the committee on its funding recommendation. So those two committee, committee meetings will be happening tomorrow. And then just a reminder that next week's regular session is the last council meeting before the summer recess. We will recess until July 22nd, at which time, who knows what kind of world we will be living in and whether we'll still be meeting like this. So those are the items that I wanted to mention. I don't believe there are any other scheduling matters.
Very good. If there's no other announcements from members about upcoming meetings or events, anything else? We, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I just wanted to mention that the council executive committee is considering ways to extend the level of accessibility that we've had while meeting via Zoom to continue even if we start meeting in person again. So that is something that's being discussed.
Yes, I've put out a request for, you know, discussion of this issue among council staff, and we'll be discussing, I think, over the recess, how to, how to make that happen. Mr. Lucas.
One more item, and maybe Councilmember Sims wants to, to announce this. It sounded like you made a reference to the Public Safety Committee possibly meeting next Tuesday. I don't know that we've issued a notice for that meeting, but one may be forthcoming if that committee intends to meet as well.
Mr. Sims?
It was my intentions to, that was just decided this evening, and my intentions was to get with you after, later on today, to make sure it was properly noticed and to set up Zoom and that sort of thing. I apologize for my delay. I thought in discussing with our president earlier that he was going to.
Oh, my apologies.
Address this. However, the Public Safety, tentatively until we get it properly noticed, is scheduled to have a meeting next Tuesday, June 16th at 6:30 p.m.
Councilmember Sandberg, you had your hand up?
Yes, just a clarification on the committees to meet right after this. That does not include me, I don't believe. Did you correct that?
I may, I may be incorrect. I thought.
I don't believe I'm on the Sustainability Committee. I just wanted to clarify.
I thought I was in.
Councilmember Scambalary, you're the chair.
Yes, I believe you were, but I'll confirm with you on the break, Susan. Thank you. And just to clarify, if I remember Mayor Hamilton's comments correctly, he mentioned that the Board of Public Safety is planning to meet next Tuesday at 5:00. And then we are also, if I'm understanding correctly, planning a meeting of the Public Safety Committee of City Council at 6:30. And I could, if I were a guessing woman, those two meetings are going to get confused and conflated. So we might want to be very, very clear about, and certainly they're all public, but we might want to be clear that that's actually two meetings happening next Tuesday night, both related to public safety, both with similar purposes, if that's the case.
We will endeavor to make the notice as clear as possible. That's a good observation. I see Councilmember Flaherty and then Piedmont Smith.
Piedmont Smith was first, I think, if she wants to go ahead.
Before she goes ahead, Mr. Sims, did you have a follow-up to Councilmember Scambalary?
I did, or actually my comments earlier about that Monday meeting, I'm sorry, Tuesday meeting of the Public Safety Standing Committee. I didn't give much detail, and like I said, this was very quickly formed, but at any rate, the intent, this will not be a legislative session. It is intended to receive information from the public, particularly in light of some of the, the social events that have been happening, some of the many requests that we have heard or opportunities to discuss some things specifically from a public safety standpoint, more specifically maybe police, but that's the intent. It is also planned to have city staff, in particular from BPD, and all this remains to be arranged. But we think it will be valuable from an educational or informative standpoint from staff in order to go along with public comment, in order that we can receive that information, discuss it and digest it, and either make recommendations or plans as we move forward. So sorry to be somewhat vague. We started a different avenue and got pushed to another way, so thanks for this opportunity. Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg and Scambalary and Piedmont Smith.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I, I don't know if this is the appropriate venue to, to bring this up, but I have concerns about the timing of that meeting because it conflicts with the hospital site redevelopment public forum, that is 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on June 16th. Perhaps that's something we can talk about, you know, with Mr. Sims, the committee chair, after this meeting. This is not really back and forth.
No, it's okay. I would say, thanks, Mr. Sims, for making clear the goal of the, of the committee's hearing. And I would say that while we've announced a time tonight, it's not set in stone until it's advertised. So if, if the committee would like to delay the start of that meeting in order to accommodate you, I think we might be able to arrange it, but it's all happening very quickly, so when it's advertised, that'll make it official.
It's not to accommodate me, it's to accommodate the public who would like to have interest in both topics.
My apology, and well, a point well made. Councilmember Flaherty.
Similarly, actually, in following up on Councilmember Scambalary's point, not only about the potential for members of public to conflate a Board of Public Safety meeting and a Public Safety Standing Committee meeting, but if they, if there's only an hour and a half difference between their starting times, and it sounded like, I'm trying to remember now, I think there was going to be some educational component to the Board of Public Safety meeting as well regarding our, you know, practices and training protocols and otherwise in the BPD, that it's entirely possible those meetings would overlap, yet have similar functions in some respects, or a lot of folks who may be interested in both. So, so yeah, maybe, maybe something we, we need to think about before, as we finalize. I would certainly defer to the committee, I just wanted to express that concern as well.
I'm sure it will be of great interest to committee members, let alone the rest of the council and public regarding what goes on at the Board of Public Safety that night, since it will be relevant to the subject that the committee would take up. Although I do think that the committee will have different and probably broader concerns. So, you know, I would recommend that everyone who can try to attend the Board of Public Safety meeting as well. With that, I will just once again reiterate that, you know, we will, the official time of the committee meeting will be set when it's advertised. But, you know, what Councilmember Sims originally proposed is, was the original target time. Councilmember Rallo.
Council President Volan, could you describe who will be present at the meeting following this one? Who serves on the Sustainable Development?
My understanding is that the members of the Sustainable Development Committee are Councilmember Scambalary Chair, Councilmember Sandberg, Councilmember Flaherty, and myself.
Thank you.
I'm mistaken about that, then I don't have the list in front of me.
Apparently that's correct.
Okay, so those are the members who will stay for the committee. Councilmember Scambalary.
And yet, of course, it is a public meeting, and all council members are more than welcome.
Right. Is there any other discussion? If not, before I adjourn, I simply want to wish Councilmember Rallo a happy birthday since we can't be present in the office. To do so, I will not make anybody sing him the song.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Now's the time to adjourn. It's your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned, the committee will, the Sustainable Development Committee will meet in approximately five minutes. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Dave.
Thank you.